The work session, September the eighth. The invocation will be provided by Bethany Baptist Church Associate Pastor Justin Olenby. Pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Denny Collins, please stand.
Our heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the blessing of living in this community and county. We thank you for those who both lead and serve us, and we ask a special blessing for them now, that you would lead them and guide them and give them clear minds and discernment to decide what is best for our community and county. Lord, would you bless them and the people they and families they represent? Father, you've told us in your word that you are the giver of every good thing and the source of true wisdom, and Lord, that's what we are asking for now. Would you be honored in this time this afternoon? In Jesus' name, we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, delirious, and just as for all.
Report from the county mayor. Mayor Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. You have three resolutions in front of you that I would like to request someone put on the agenda. First one is the mental health contract for the second company that provides mental health services to our first responders. If someone would put that on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to put that on there.
Thank you. The second one is a resolution for our phone service here at the courthouse and the juvenile center. And this comes to you because it's a three-year contract, which is a savings over continuing to do the one-year contract. Someone would put that on the agenda.
Can you put that on, Commissioner Blake?
Sure.
Thank you. And then the third one is a three-year contract for cardiac monitors for the ambulance service. And if someone would put that on the agenda, I would appreciate it.
Commissioner Rogers, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I have is Baylor Atkins is here today from Tennessee Achieves, and she wants to give you an update and a report about what's been going on with Tennessee Achieves. Baylor?
Yes, thank you all so much for having me. So Tennessee Achieves is the partnering organization for the Tennessee Promise Scholarship, and we are here to support students that are seeking to extend their post-secondary education. So we've existed since 2008 as a privately funded workforce development program, and we have expanded quite a bit over the past seventeen years. We've made a dent in college access and retention across the state, but our one goal is to make sure that students have the support and resources that they need to get the credentials to find a great job here in Tennessee. Eighty-four point seven percent of our students that graduate with the Tennessee Promise Scholarship actually continue to live and work in the state of Tennessee after they graduate. So those are going to be our future educators, our future doctors, our locally elected officials, and we want to make sure that they have the support and resources that they need in order to be successful, not only in their college journey, but as they enter into their career as well. Just a brief overview of the scope of work Tennessee Achieves does is we serve seventy-four counties in Tennessee and over four hundred high schools across the state. Ninety-three percent of all Tennessee's high school seniors are served by us, as well as ninety-three percent of all of Tennessee Promise applicants. And so of all of these students, eighty-nine percent of the students that come through our program are from a vulnerable student population. So this could be rural students, students of color, academically at-risk students, so students who didn't test well or test into college-ready classes on the ACT, as well as first-generation college students. And so we want to make sure that our most vulnerable student populations have the support and resources that they need to be successful as they enter into college. And so Tennessee Achieves does this through a program that we call Complete, and Complete is a two-pronged approach. So we have complete coaches. We have thirty-five coaches on our staff who are dedicated to serving students every single day. They have a cohort of about four hundred students each, and they meet with them on campus. They call, they text, they build a personal relationship with these students to make sure that they can identify barriers to success during their college process and help them come up with an action plan to overcome those barriers. So here in Bradley County, we have four hundred and thirty students that we serve, and every student that receives a complete coach also gets access to a thousand dollars of emergency grant funding through Tennessee Achieves. So this can be used for really anything that could serve as a barrier to college success and college graduation. So Tennessee can be a pretty rural state in some places. Sometimes students are driving sixty miles round trip just to get to class every day. That's not super sustainable with the price of gas these days, and then going to school full-time, even working full-time, might not meet that need. So we're able to give those students gas cards. A lot of our students are helping their families put food on the table, and we're able to offer grocery cards to those type of students. And then we also help with supplies, so textbooks, getting students laptops. You can't be successful in college these days without a laptop, as well as supplies for our technical school students. Since the inception of this program, we've distributed almost seven million dollars across the state, and a hundred and forty thousand of that being here in Bradley County. And so this really just goes to show that when students have a community that's really invested in their success, as well as some financial attainment as well, they really do succeed. Since 2019 to 2021, we saw a five percentage point increase in the three-year graduation rate across the state. And I want to say that Bradley County's graduation rate in 2021 was at forty-three percent, and that was up at least five percent from the years prior. And so not only do we want to make sure that students are successful as they go into college, but we also want to make sure that they're set up for success as they enter into the workforce. And so Tennessee Achieves has been developing its workforce program as well. So we have partnered for the past two years with different organizations and businesses across the state to launch something we call Job Shadowing Days. So we've had over forty-one events with over five hundred and fifty students participate, and these events are really designed to help expose students to new career pathways. When I talk to students, they think they can do one of two things. They can be a teacher, they can be a nurse, and we need more teachers and we need more nurses, but those don't always align with a student's skill set or their passions. So we want to make sure that they have opportunities to engage with businesses in their community that they can get a job with after they graduate with the degree that they have. And so in conjunction with this coaching model and this expansion of workforce development, we are also expanding what it looks like to be a Tennessee Achieves mentor. And so for the past seventeen years, mentors have been the backbone of our programming. We are a team of fifty people, and we serve sixty thousand students every single year. So we could not possibly do that scale of work without volunteers from the community. And so historically, we have had our traditional access program that helps students as they are going from high school entering into college, their senior year, navigate that program or navigate that journey. So a lot of college-going action items, things like getting your FAFSA completed, doing your college admissions application, getting enrolled in your classes. And this year, we are expanding a new program to go alongside that one called a Workforce Mentorship Program. So these mentors would help students that are in their second year of college as they enter into the workforce. And so they would be paired with people in their community that have done jobs similar. So if you were a teacher, you would be mentoring a student that's in education. And so we want to make sure that they have the resources and support that they need as they enter into the workforce, because as we all know, that's one of the points of getting a college education, is that you can get a paying or a good job that pays you a living wage, and we want to make sure students are set up for that as they graduate from college and enter into the workforce. And so we are recruiting mentors right now. Our deadline is November fourteenth. And so I have a few pamphlets here that I'm going to leave with the mayor, and if you're interested, there is a link to register as well as our website. I think that's it. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Baylor? It's a great program that's helping a lot of kids continue their education in Bradley County and using money from those of you who like to gamble on the side. I bet something Baylor didn't know, before they ever started the Hope Scholarship, we, our Tennessee Achieves, we had what was called Bradley Achieves here in Bradley County. You did know that, that's good. Knox County actually started it, Knox Achieves, and then we went out and recruited some entrepreneurs here in Bradley County and funded it for a few years until they started up Tennessee Achieves. So what's now statewide actually began with Knoxville and Bradley County, something that a lot of people tend to forget, and I'm surprised that Baylor knew that. Any questions? The biggest thing she was saying is every year we do need mentors, because every student that gets this Hope Scholarship has to be assigned to a mentor, and it's always kind of tough recruiting enough mentors. So if anybody would like to or knows someone who'd like to, would like to, I'll have these things here that will tell you more about the mentorship. If not, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Baylor.
Anyone have anything for the mayor? Thank you very much. We'll now move along to the committees and our commissioners' reports. We'll start on our right with Commissioner Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, the city and county fire tax committee, created through the annexation interlocal agreement adopted earlier this year, met last week to determine the most appropriate method to hold Bradley County harmless for any losses of fire tax proceeds resulting from the annexation in the areas between the former urban growth boundaries and the newly adopted urban growth boundaries. The committee voted to recommend approval of a proposal from the city of Cleveland to appropriate the fire tax upon annexation to hold Bradley County harmless for the following two tax years. Copy of the proposal, along with the relevant section in the interlocal agreement requiring the discussion, have been provided for review. In a summary, the proposal provided that when the property located between the old UGB and the new UGB is annexed with the annex, the city will, one, pay Bradley County the prorated fire tax on the properties valued at the time of the annexation, and, two, will pay the fire tax payments on the properties for the next two years. Mr. Chairman, I place this recommendation on the September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five voting session agenda.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I will have to give this to the mayor, though. His negotiating skills are excellent on this. He really got more than what I ever expected out of it.
For the first time in my memory, the city has been very cooperative on this negotiation, and that's great.
Yeah, what he was referring to there, Mr. Chairman, in your agreement, it actually says one year, we argued for five, and we got it, ended up with approximately three. So it's a little better, but we wish it was all annexations. It's only annexations that fits this category, but there are a couple going on right now that will be the first ones to do this. So that's why it's important to get this approved, so we know what to expect whenever that occurs. Thank you.
Yes.
Hey, Mayor, just one quick question on the timing of that. So let's say an annexation happens in September this year, so that first one will be prorated, so it'll be September, October, November, December for that particular year, and then two full years after that.
Yes.
So when will the quote-unquote payment be due to the county?
It's my understanding they would pay that first prorated one immediately, I guess.
As soon as the annexation is legal?
And the others would be when the taxes come due, so I assume it'll be around October.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Commissioner Alford, please.
Yes, Chairman, thank you. Two things, this second district's doing well, and the one other announcement, the law enforcement committee meeting will meet here in the commission room at eleven AM on September eleventh. That's eleven o'clock here in the commission room. Just one other thing, Mayor. The other day, after our conversation about the monitors at the landfill, I got an extended, quite long text from Mr. Roark. He said, if I'm not mistaken, one of the monitors was out. Who, in the county government, I guess, is I'm finally asking, who is in charge of that area anymore? Or, you know, we're paying seventy-three thousand dollars, and I don't know who's in charge of it, Mr. Roark takes care of watching it, but do we have somebody that monitors, the monitors, make sure they all running and everything?
The person when we know about it is Bentley Thomas. Usually, the way it really works is Mr. Roark has already contacted the company, and they're a little bit slow about fixing it. It was fixed last week, by the way, but Bentley is the government contact, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed to know. That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder, the HCI workshop is scheduled for tomorrow, September ninth, at one PM here in the commission room. We are currently accepting letters of intent for eligible organizations for projects that will improve health, wellness, and quality of life for Bradley County. For more details, you're encouraged to attend the workshop or contact the county commission office. So that's a FYI right there. Also, real quick, back to this resolution, just for all of the commissioners to know, I chatted with the mayor just ahead. We will include language to make sure it's either emergency service or spelled out nine-one-one. Right now, it has the county sheriff's office, EMS, EMA, and the fire and rescue. This is coming out of the opioid money that we earmarked, I think about three years ago we started. But it also includes the nine-one-one, so we'll make sure that that language is put in there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All's well in the third. I did want to ask, Mayor, and I should have asked during the conversation, was there a discussion about the automatic toning? We talked about that previously. Did that get anywhere? Do you have a feeling about where that might go?
We said in the meeting that once we got this issue resolved, it needed to be done quickly, that we would continue, so we'll have another meeting in a month or so to continue that dialogue.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman. As I was out this past week, litter picking with some inmates and noticed out on Varnell Road and Black Fox, a lot of fire hydrants and water going in. That really makes me happy to see all that. I want to thank Lori for everything she does on the water and this commission and mayor for everything that we've done. We've put a lot of waterway out in the sixth district. We put a lot out, first district, we've put a lot of water out everywhere, and I appreciate all of them. I'd like to ask Alan Mincy if he would come up. I think he's got an important announcement he wants to do today. Thank you.
Don't laugh at me, Howard, okay? Yeah, I'm not used to talking to you guys. I'm used to writing down what you guys talk about. You have placed at your seats there our Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day flyer. That's coming up on November the eighth. We picked that date because it happens to be the open date for UT football, so we thought that was a perfect day to do it, because we don't have to compete against the Vols. They'll probably be, what, seven and oh by then?
Oh.
Eight and oh.
Three more.
Who they play this weekend? That's right. We shouldn't talk about that. But Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, that's when folks can bring their pesticides, their paint. We really stress oil-based paint, because that's something that you can't throw away with normal garbage. You can, with regular paint, you can dry it out, and I believe that it can be picked up at your home. But the oil-based paint, the insecticides, the automotive fluids, and electronics, we're doing electronics again. We work with Clean Harbors, that's the company that comes, and they will be accepting electronics this time again. We luck out, and they can do it, but it's a costly thing to work with them. We appreciate the county helping us. I believe we are able to fund the household hazardous waste through revenues from the landfill. So we appreciate the county's support with that. We also have support from both stormwater divisions, Bradley County and the city of Cleveland. Tim, I guess we should say we have support from the Bradley County Sheriff's Department, because we wouldn't be able to do it if we couldn't utilize the justice center for the site that we do this. And we have some folks that come from inside the jail that came out and helped us, the trustees there, and they work hard to help us. I know earlier this year, we had, I think we had like four hundred, four hundred and seventy-something cars that came through. One of them had an elderly lady who was having a birthday, and the trustees and the Clean Harbor folks all sang "Happy Birthday" to her and made her day, along with, you know, getting rid of her household hazardous waste. But that's coming up November eighth, eight to twelve. We hope that you will pass this word along to everyone, and hey, if you've got some stuff that you need to get rid of, bring it that day, and it's for Bradley County residents. So I don't know if you have any questions. The flyer will tell you what you can't bring. There's no need for me to go over a lot of that. You already know, don't bring ammunition, don't bring radioactive waste, don't bring anything from the hospital waste that you might have, you know? And if you're a company, you know, this is for households, not for companies. So, you know, that's pretty much what's going on. Tim, is there anything else I need to mention?
I think you covered it well. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Alan Mincy. He's the KV director. That's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert, please.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gouins?
The fifth district is beautiful and doing well. That's all I have.
Man of vision. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. September the twentieth, Relay for Life. I'll keep that in mind, twelve days from now. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ledford. Oh, you just hit Commissioner. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, had the opportunity to go to the William H. Hale Agricultural Center over there off of Peerless Road for the eighty-sixth Annual Junior Dairy Show that the Rotary Club of Cleveland puts on, and it's a great event. If you've never got to go, obviously, it was this past week, and hopefully you'll attend the eighty-seventh one next year. But I just want to say thank you as a Rotarian, to Hannah Goodson and her staff for all that they do out there at the center, and for allowing the Rotary Club to come out there and put that event on. It's a great way to learn a lot about cows, dairy cows in particular, if you don't know a lot about them, and be able to see a lot of young kids in our community. A lot of Bradley County students are the ones that are putting the dairy show on with the Rotary and being able to show their dairy cows. So it was a really great event, and obviously, many of you attended as well. I guess it was last Friday, Deputy Chief Maney's retirement party, and I just want to say thank you publicly to him for his forty-seven years of service and all that he's done for Bradley County, and know that he will be greatly missed over there. And got to speak with him for a while there at the event, and he was just very thankful for being able to serve Bradley County and for everything that, and we're very thankful for him as well. So other than that, Mr. Chairman, the seventh district is doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Winters, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seventh district's doing well. We are, as neighborhoods and along a sixty highway, we are accommodating the fact that there are loud mufflers and heavy trucks that go through there. So we're accommodating the fact that we've had progress and had great success in the moving of transportation east to west in Bradley County, and we're proud of that road and what it does for us to be able to get in and out. So thanks to the city and the county, the federal government, the state government for what they've been able to do on that road. That's all we got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Agenda item A, Commissioner Martin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is that time of year when we get to hear from our trustee. He has got his annual report, and he's informed me, though, that questions that we may have, his fee for answering questions has been dropped by fifty percent, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it. This is my annual report to the county commission and give you an update on what's going on with our taxes, sales tax, property tax, investments, different things. And as I usually start out, the condition of Bradley County, the condition of Bradley County finances are excellent. This commission, past commissions, Commissioner Blake, Mayor Davis, when we compare what we're doing in Bradley County to some other counties, we are knocking it out of the park. You guys are really doing a good job managing the money, and we try to do a good job in the trustee's office, coordinating the location of where the money's put as far as accounts, and also, as you know, we take great pride in our investments and our accuracy in our customer service. So we're in great shape. Before I start, I want to introduce Kim Osment. She's with us. She is the coordinator over our tax relief and tax freeze programs, which I'll discuss in the program just a little bit. Those are going to be very important to the trustee's office and also you commissioners and the mayor as we go into tax season. Talk about what we've got going. Partial payment programs, we review that every year. We continue to increase the enrollment in those. We have programs that will let citizens pay their taxes over a twelve-month period if they sign up. We have bank drafts, we have walk-in and mail-in, and then if they don't sign up for the twelve months, we also have a program where they can start paying when their tax bills are received all the way through February. So we try to assist and make it easy for the taxpayers to pay their tax payments. Total on the program, this past year, we had one thousand nine hundred and fourteen, one thousand twenty-two through bank drafts, eight hundred and ninety-two through walk-in and through the mail, and I'd like to give a notice out to David Swalas. David took this program on years ago, and it's not been easy. I mean, he's done a great job and a lot of detail to it, a lot of change through the years, people dropping off and adding people and changing account numbers, and David has done an excellent job. Partial payment programs, total amount to be collected over twelve months is one point six million dollars. You can see it's increased year after year. Rollover estimate, this is important to the mayor. We started out years ago, I think the first one we had was seventy-something thousand dollars, first year we did the partial payments, and you can see that now, this past year, we rolled over six hundred and thirty thousand. What does that do? That helps with the county cash flow until taxes start coming in. As I said, we have a partial payment program all the way through October through February. It's, we also accept delinquent taxes until it's turned over to the clerk and master's office, and all partial payment programs have been approved by the Tennessee Comptroller's Office and the Bradley County Commission. I want to spend just a little bit of time on this one here. As you gentlemen know, we've had a new appraisal. I've seen some of the numbers, and even though we didn't increase a penny of what we proceeded last year, it's where those increases have been and the decreases have been, and there's a lot of increases on residential property, more than usual. So we've got two programs, you're going to be, the reason I say that, you're going to be receiving calls, and I know our office is going to be flooded with people wanting some help. And we have two programs. We have the tax freeze program and the tax relief program. Tax relief program is a state program that gives taxpayers a rebate back. It depends where you live in the county, anywhere from usually around eighty-five dollars up to about a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So we have that program. The state, this past year, gave Bradley County taxpayers rebates totaling three hundred and four thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. The tax freeze program, that's what I think we're going to be, I'm going to be questioned about a lot. I wanted to sign up for the tax freeze program. My taxes went up eighty dollars. Well, if you had been signed up this past year, you would be on tax freeze. But if you're not on tax freeze already, your taxes would be frozen at what the new tax rate is. So make sure when you talk with taxpayers that they're not going to get a tax freeze if they sign up this year, but they will freeze it at what this current year, going into twenty-five, what that current year is going to be. So, but take advantage of those programs as you get your calls, as you get your questions out in the community. Take advantage of these two programs and send them to us. Uh, take advantage of these two programs and send them to us and we'll process them as quickly as we can and, and try to help the taxpayers. Mentioned something about the reappraisal. When I, when I say that, I'm not criticizing the appraisal, reappraisal. I know the assessor has to do that. I'm just saying that, that some of them went up uh, more than have, they went up in years past. Let's just say that. So it's not a criticism of reappraisal program and what the assessor had to do. It's just what I'm seeing so far on preliminary number. As you can see, uh, tax relief, how's it split? We've got the greater majority of our tax relief. Um, elderly, we have uh, disabled veterans, we have disabled veterans widow, a widder, and then we have the disabled. So there's the pie chart on that. And um. You can see that the greater majority is elderly. Now, we try every year, we, we go to the newspapers and we go to the radio stations. And we've even sent mailers out to churches in the past. We have so many citizens that out there in the community that qualify for these programs, that need the programs. That even after everything we do, we still have them come in the office and say, well, I've never heard of this. So help us share the message where you can. Sales tax collection um, continues to increase. Uh, I think, and I'm just going to, I'm not a economist, but uh, I'm thinking that, that this past year and, and last year. We, we increased across the board, city of Cleveland, Bradley County, and the city of Charleston. We increased across the board and I, but I'm not sure how much of that is, is being in new bought items because of the increase in prices. We did increase, sales tax increased, but I just wonder how much of that is because of uh, the inflation that we were under uh, the last two or three years. So don't know that, but uh, the good news is it increased. And uh, that's site-based, that's where uh, the uh, increase in the amounts have happened. Sales tax distribution, everyone benefits pretty much in the county, in the city. Bradley County's went up. County schools, city schools, city of Cleveland, the city of Charleston have all went up based on sales tax. Tax revenue, you can see this, this is real. Taxes, personal property taxes and utilities billed. And you can see through that chart, the growth that we've been having through the years. Uh, back all the way, two thousand seven, thirty-eight point two million. Last year, tax collection season, fifty-one point nine. This year it's fifty-three point two. So you can see the increase. Uh, new money this year is about one point three million dollars. That's after the, everything had been settled on the reappraisals, bringing in the same amount of money as last year. We're increasing through growth, one point three million dollars. That's good news. Continue to grow. This is the, in lieu of taxes, uh, this commission uh, has given tax benefits to companies for expansions and relocation. And you can see, we have a couple, three more than we usually have this year. Some uh, new projects, a couple of new ones that have come in. And uh, so we continue to, to uh, increase that. I've not got the new list for this year yet, but uh, that was a good list last year. Twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year interest earned was a hundred and five percent of Fed Fund Rate. Now, what does that mean? Back years ago, I'm going to say around two thousand seven, two thousand eight, working with this commission. We set an investment policy. Bradley County didn't have one and by state law you have to have one. So we said, well, we want to truly gauge how our investments are. We don't want to set the limit low and then greatly exceed it and brag about how we did. We want a barometer to know whether we're truly doing good on our investments. And what we decided to do was uh, let's base it off the Fed Fund Rate. As, as the Fed Fund Rate decreases or increases, so is our investment returns. So the investment policy for Bradley County says that uh, the goal is to get a hundred percent of the Fed Fund Rate. We have never fallen below a hundred percent. And we did hit a hundred percent about uh, five or six years ago, but we never went below that. So we're real proud of that and uh, because it takes a lot of monitoring. We, we monitor the cash flow daily in the trustee's office and we invest every penny that we've got to invest. To make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for the bucks that we've got uh, in our office. And uh, Deborah Swalford, Connie Fulmer, Kristy Dashar, they're in the accounting department and they have done a great job. Matter of fact, they, if you want to know the truth about it, I'll just say it. They're the ones that's doing the good job. They tell me what our numbers are and we work together to make sure that uh, that uh, we're doing well. And it's going to take a lot of work over the next two or three years that uh. Uh, I'll be gone, so I'm, I'm hopeful the new uh, trustee pays a lot of attention to this. Sure they will. But uh, we're going to have uh, uh, rates going down over the next couple of years. And we're solid where we're at through one more year. So uh, we're kind of locked into the higher rates. But the, the trick's going to be as those rates go down and as our investments mature, making sure you don't get caught behind a curve. And I'm sure they won't. I'm sure they'll do a good job, whoever it is. Our banking contract is through twenty-twenty-seven. And uh, what that banking contract is with Pinnacle Bank. And what that banking contract does is pay us ten basis points above the federal fund rate on all Bradley County bank accounts. We keep a lot of money in our county banking accounts and it's a lot of different departments. So if we're trying to stay a hundred percent of Fed Fund Rate, we are able to lock in a uh, banking account rate, banking contract rate. It already pays us ten percent above that. So we've got a great contract and that contract is uh, good through twenty-twenty-seven. And uh, then it'll have to be bid out again. But hopefully we'll get uh, similar rates as we go forward. Back in two thousand six, we looked at investment policy. As I said, we didn't have one, excuse me, we didn't have one. And what we wanted to do was let's look at what county had been doing versus how we could improve. So working with the uh, County Commission Finance uh, Committee. What we did was uh, changed investment policy. And the way we uh, look at things as far as how's Bradley County's funds working for Bradley County's citizens. And you can see based on the changes that we made, just, this is just a sheet showing how much more we made per year versus if we had stayed with the old policy. Total increase with the new policy, the total interest collected from September two thousand six through June twenty-twenty-five. This, these reports are based on fiscal years, so the end of June. Trustee's office has raised twenty-seven million dollars for Bradley County. We're very proud of that. That's uh, as I go off in the sunset, that's going to be one of the things that I really can say and be proud of, that we, we made a lot of money for Bradley County and we're very proud of that. Again, the brains behind a lot of this has been Buster Stewart and Gary McDonald. They've done a great job uh, setting us up initially. And then if I need something as we go, I give them a phone call and say, hey, this is what I've got. What do you think? And they've helped me through the years. So if you see those two guys, you might want to thank them for the, the help they gave to the trustee to make that. Excess fees returned to Bradley County. As you know, I'm a fee office and uh. We have returned fifteen thousand, fifteen point two, sorry, fifteen point two million dollars back to Bradley County of unused excess fees. I've always believed in running a, a tight ship, getting what we need. Having the expertise and the office that we need, but also not wasting money. And uh, I've been in the budgeting process, working with the mayor, working with finance committees. I've never had anything that I've asked for refused and I appreciate y'all's help very much. But we returned fifteen point two million dollars back to Bradley County in excess fee. Efficiency, um, you can see that the, the number of parcels to be collected has risen from forty-six thousand five ninety-one in two thousand six to fifty-seven thousand seven eighty-eight in twenty-twenty-five, a twenty-four percent increase. In twenty-fifteen, the trustee's office also began collecting Charleston city taxes. And I'd like to thank publicly uh, Mayor Lattimore and the Charleston City Commission. Uh, they've been great to work with. It's a situation that uh. Working together, we've saved Charleston money. They pay us a small portion and save Bradley County money. I can, just so, so you'll know, I can print, mail and collect Charleston city taxes cheaper than they could just print them. So it's, it's a good situation for them, it's a good situation for Bradley County. HCI funds, I heard uh, some talk a little bit ago about HCI funds. We're doing really well on those. I'll let you, I won't, I won't read every line, but the bottom line, you're interested in how much money you've got to spend uh, this year. So uh, it looks like it's going to be around six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So uh, done very well on HCI. We still got a couple of interfund county loans. We've got uh, CD Investments. And uh, so this past year we've got four point one five on our uh, return, total return. Seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, but as you know, we have to take out fifteen percent uh, Matt Brown tax. Pull fifteen percent out to be used later or to be uh, put aside for the cost of the money. So six fifty-two, six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to spend on HCI grants. Long-term investments, we have about thirty million dollars. There's a list of them. You can see the rate that we're receiving on the right. And I say this every year and, and I, I hope sometimes if you guys run in to uh, some of the local banks, uh, representatives, that you thank them for what they do for Bradley County. Because every one of them at one time or the other over the last twenty years has had Bradley County funds invested in their bank. And we have, we have uh, done really well. Yeah, I, I never was comfortable uh, investing money outside of Bradley County. I've had some good offers through the years, but as long as we could get the returns we needed to get with our local banks, I stayed with our local banks. Electronic billing, uh, we started this uh, two thousand seventeen. This past year, we had nineteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight tax bills that were paid online uh, through mobile or attachment download. That reduced labor, printing and mailing costs. Total dollar amount collected in twenty-twenty-four was five point two million dollars, which was a five point one six percent increase over twenty-twenty-three. Uh, that program continues to uh, grow. The guy that manages that, I talked about David Swallis a minute ago, the guy that manages this is Tim Akins. He does a great job with this. So uh, we, we're hopeful that continues. I'll be gone, some of you may be gone, retired, whatever. But as we go through the years, this is how it's going to be paid. This is how property tax is going to be paid. Now, as long as, as someone wants to come into office and pay, they can do that. But as a younger generation continues to come up, uh, you know, I, I was with my grandchildren this weekend. You know, the only thing they're on, they're on those tablets. You know, they know how to, how to uh, program a phone better than I do. And uh, so that's the new generation coming up. They're not going to write a check and send it in. They're going to do it electronic. So uh, that's gonna, that's the future right there. Electronic billing is the future. And uh, we have good uh, programs within our office that uh, and our vendors that allows us to do that. And that's it. Uh, that's the last presentation I'll make to this commission. And I've enjoyed every one of them. And uh, I want to thank you. I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank the past commissions. But uh, we, I'm proud of the trustee's office. I look forward to see trustee's office moving forward as I retire. And uh, look forward to seeing the commission continue to do a great job. But thank you very much. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. That's just not baloney. I thank you for everything you've done for Bradley County to help me, help the trustee's office. And when you've done that, you've helped the taxpayers of Bradley County. And I appreciate that very much. And I'll take any questions and also, thank you. Also, Kim is going to be uh, hanging around after the meeting if you've got any questions about tax relief or uh, tax freeze. And you can always give me a call and uh, if uh, I don't know the answer, I'll find it. But uh, uh, we need, need to be aware that there's going to be some people that need help on their taxes this coming year. We're there to help them. Any questions, guys?
Mr. Thompson?
Mike, you always done a good job. Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Yes.
Just a couple of questions. Uh, Mike and I go way back, so he's always done a great job. He's a good friend. When's those two inter-local ju- uh, loans come mature? Do you have that in the back of your head?
Uh, Gary, I, I don't have them written down right now, but uh, I think they were for twenty years initially.
Yeah.
There, right, Malon? Twenty years initially. So I'm not, I can get that for you, but I'm not sure when it is. Now, you had three last year I was here and you paid up one off.
Right.
And Commissioner Blake has told me that you're hopeful to pay one more off next year or two. But I'll get that information.
That's all right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Real quick. Uh, can we, on that, on those interfund loans, you have those rates. When do they get adjusted? You mentioned earlier that the feds probably, and it's been well reported, that the rates are probably going to start going down over time for at least the next twelve, sixteen months. When do you adjust those interfund loan rates for us?
Those are adjusted once a year and uh, the anniversary of when those loans were uh, first taken out. Gary and I work together. We have a uh, a formula that we use based on what the Fed Fund Rate is, what the M municipal, municipal loan rate is, and uh, then we negotiate back and forth.
So if they, the, the feds go down on their rates, then we get to benefit from that as well?
Yes. Yes.
Thanks, Mike.
Now, now, just give you an example. If, if we were negotiating today, they would be at today's rates. We don't look three months or two months down the road saying, well, they're probably going to lower them here. It's whatever it is today. And then the next anniversary rate, that'll be changed.
But the benefit of us paying down the, that one last year and, and if we can be aggressive with them in the future is that it allows you to free up that money and then you can go to one of those banks and invest it for a higher rate and bring in more for HCI.
Yeah, when those were initially set up, they were set up to benefit Bradley County and also the HCI fund. And it's worked out well. Uh, but yes, you're, you're right. If, if one of those was paid off, I might be able to get a little bit better interest rate. You just have, I can't tell you for sure. You'd just have to look at it at the point and say, yes, we can, or you know, we need to stay where we're at.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Malon.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Communications from the audience. Uh, we'll recognize and allow five minutes to anyone that would wish to speak. Is there anyone that would desire to speak? Being the one, we'll move along to the upcoming events. HCI Committee, September the ninth at one PM here at the courthouse. Board of Education Meeting, September the ninth at five PM at the central office. Law Enforcement Committee, September the eleventh at eleven AM. The voting session will be Monday, September the fifteenth at twelve o'clock here at the courthouse.